Perfect. Again, if you're just joining us today and joining us now, we're going to wait a few more minutes for I went to jump online. Again, my two hosts for tonight, my two guests are state semi member Miguel Santiago and LA College Board Member, Scott Spunkin. As we, as we kind of deal with the pandemic, COVID-19 pandemic and the upcoming school year, we're going to touch base on not only the layout for some of the community colleges in the area, whether it's distance learning or a hybrid, but at the same time, touch on state senate member Miguel Santiago's bill when it comes to free college tuition and the process of acquiring those kinds of funds. So we'll start within the next minute or so. All right. So again, thank you all for joining me today. We have three different streams going on, on Facebook, Instagram, and of course, this Zoom meeting and platform. So let me start off by kind of giving a little overview on our two guests for today. I have assembly member, state senate member Miguel Santiago, who represents California's 53rd Assembly District, which includes downtown Los Angeles, Boyle Heights, and the surrounding areas. In the legislature, he has fought to eradicate homelessness, build affordable housing, make two years of tuition free at community colleges a reality and holistically improve the lives of all his constituents. He currently serves as the Chair of the Select Committee on LA County and the Assembly Committee on Communications and Conveyance. He also sits on the Health, Higher Education, Public Safety, and Utilities and Energy Committees. Our next, next slide, please. Our next guest speaker, and I'm happy to also have on our little weekly show Town Hall, is Los Angeles Community College Board Member Scott Spunkin. He served three consecutive terms as President of the Los Angeles Community College District's Board of Trustees. The first time in the district's 50-year history that an elected board member was selected by their peers to serve three consecutive one-year terms as president. Trustee Spunkin was first elected to the LA CCD Board, seat five in 2011, and re-elected in 2015. His current term expires in December 2020, and during his six and a half years with Prudential, Scott received the company's Community Champions Rising Star Award for his commitment to helping others and the Hero Award for creating voter registration and grassroots lobbying program. And with that, I wanted to give the floor to you guys and kind of give the audience a little, a little touch on what you guys are kind of conveying today and the different programs, especially with the upcoming school year. Let's, let's start with a state senate member Miguel Santiago, if you don't mind jumping in.
No, and thank you for having us here today, Councilmember, really appreciative of this. And let me start off by saying that we're grateful for your leadership and that of the board member who's on the line today for all that they've done. And listen, what this really boils down to is what we were able to do a couple of years ago with your help and others when we started talking about a debt-free college and a free education in the state of California. And, and what we were able to achieve in the state of California was two years, a free community college for anybody who's going to go full-time for their first time. But what's really interesting about the way we wrote this legislation with a lot of help of you was we put in there a lot more than just education because some people just say, well, you know, free college, why should we do that? But we thought it was incredibly important and the data now shows the students are, are going to taking advantage of the free community college. But there's more, more to it. So what the bill also says is that colleges have to have the wraparound support services because we know that if a student has a wraparound support services, that they will be more successful. It also talks about the need for the student to fill out the FASPA form and all the financial aid paperwork. So that, that way, we're certain that the students have financial aid. So for example, if I'm a student and I show up to free community college program, I enroll, my counselor should talk to me about my education plan, but should also be asking me to fill out my FASPA form, which qualifies me for my Cal Grants and Pell Grants. So I could have anywhere between $10,000 to $12,000 that I could pick up in financial aid and/or scholarships or anything else that I apply for. And this even works for undocumented students because what we're asking them to fill out is the California Dream Act form. And so that we've made sure that the bill is comprehensive with existing funds that we've really worked for. What it also says is that there's monies left over on the table, or if there's monies from this program that are not allocated, they can use them for other flexible uses such as transportation, such as books. We have examples in your region where dollars have been used for transportation and ensure that students have free access to transportation, where students have free access to books, all because they've been able to meet their obligation of free community college. But here's what's important, right? Is that students know about the program. So if you happen to know students, it's a very simple program. I'll speak for the Los Angeles Community College District because it's the one that I know best. It's where I served for six years before coming to the state legislature, where you could show up and say, hey, I want to be part of the community college free program or college promise program. And I show up, I fill out the forms. It's my first time enrolling in, in full-time. So I should, you'll be automatically enrolled and you get the first two years for free. Know that this is more than just free education. It comes around with the wraparound support services, as we mentioned. It makes sure that we have the financial aid programming intact. So really, it's meant to be comprehensive. Now, this year, we began the fight again to try to make the CSU free. So that means if you went to a community college for free for two years, you would go to the CSU. Unfortunately, under the pandemic budget constraints, we had to table that, but we'll be back next year to continue to fight that. And look, I'm going to say this several times. It is critically important for every student to take advantage of these programs. If it is going to be your first time going to a community college and enrolling full-time, take advantage of the program. Can't tell you enough, if you're a high school student right now and you left, you've graduated and now you're looking for your next step and under COVID, it might be a little difficult to go out of state like you thought you may have, go to Northern California. We're going to ask you to take a look at community colleges. Go for two years, there's some of the best educational institutions that we have. And it's critically important that you take advantage of all the programs. I'm going to plug in the Los Angeles Community College District. I know that my colleague who I served with will also plug that in and get into further details about the programming does. But just go on, the LACC D.org, check out free community college or call your campus or ask the board member who's going to be on in a second to expand a little bit more. But take advantage of it, it's free and it comes with financial aid and all the success tools that you need. Also want to talk a little bit about homelessness. And I know I was asked to do that and I know we've got a lot of, a lot of work to do on that. And particularly during this pandemic, we know that we could potentially multiply the number of people who are homeless because the rents aren't coming down, there's no jobs. And rest assured that we're doing all we can on the moratorium for evictions. And we're doing all we can to build the affordable housing, as most of you know. But, but the bottom line is, we were able to send dollars to the local 13 big cities, the counties and the continuum of cares. Continuum of cares are those local agencies that are bonded together to receive federal dollars. Counties, as you know, for us, the city of Los, sorry, the county of Los Angeles. And we, we did it that way so that it would be easy, accessible with already turnkey programs. In that, you'll also hear some terminology where we called Project Room Key, where we have the ability to immediately through the locals, rent hotel rooms for people who are homeless. And it's an easy program that you could tap into now, either through the county or the continuum of care. Where if you know somebody's homeless and they need that sort of service, you can look at that program and enlist those people and other council member can help with those programs as well. But just as a general, we've given over to the locals close to $2 billion. Some of that, I will say, was 300 in general funds that could have flexible uses and wraparound support services for those populations who are currently experiencing homelessness. And it was about $750 million that we released and those are for Project Room Key that you've read about over the newspaper. And then I want to remind you that we have about close to $1.3 billion in federal grand dollars that we released to the counties. And some of those, those dollars are used for flexible uses under COVID, which could mean rental assistance, voucher homelessness, or healthcare issues as well. So there are, and then $500 for the 13 big cities that we've mentioned. So there's a lot out there, a lot of programming, and we hope to get folks plugged in and helping us to solve this humanitarian crisis. So thank you, Councilmember, and I'll yield it back to you.
Thank you so much, State Senate Member Miguel Santiago. And you touched on a very important issues, especially with homelessness. At the same time, you know, taking advantage of these community college programs and the tuition that you, the free tuition that's going forward now. With the amount of revenue people are losing now and the jobs that they're losing and the increase in homelessness, it kind of puts a strain on, you know, what families can and can't afford. So having this kind of access to education and increasing that knowledge base of our residents is crucial. But I want to thank you for that. And I know you have a hard stop at 5:30.
Only because I'm presenting in committee for no other reason.
Hopefully it's something you're excited about.
Always.
I kind of like, I want to kind of give you a few questions from the residents that kind of pertain to you before I jump in and give the floor to Scott Spunkin. We have a question coming in from Patty Najira. Do you have to qualify for financial aid in order to take advantage of free community college for the two years? And how does one apply for this program?
We didn't write that in the bill. We felt that anybody who shows up to a community college should have two years for free if it's their first time. So we didn't write that in the bill and I don't expect it to be, to be a means test program. If that happens to be the case, make sure you reach out to our office. We wrote the bill plain and simple. Anyone can qualify for free community college so long as it's the first time they're enrolling into, in the, a community college and they go full-time for two years. It is absolutely free and it's not means tested. You asked about qualifying for financial aid programs. Here's the reason we wrote in the bill that the local colleges had to ensure that folks filled out the FASPA form, because when you fill out the FASPA form, it's a federal loan program form and Pell Grant form, it captures most of the financial aid that folks qualify for. So let's say you're going to do more than two years, it automatically captures you in the Bog waiver, automatically catches you in the Pell Grant and also the Cal Grant. And then in the form, as I remember it, for me, it's been a couple of decades since I filled it out, but as I remember it, it also, it also allows you to apply for financial aid in, in the way of scholarships. So the, the reason we felt so strongly about that is because when you fill out your FASPA form, it'll automatically, if you qualify for any financial aid, will qualify you for the Pell Grant and the Cal Grant. And oftentimes, that could be anywhere between $10,000 to $12,000. So it helps to subsidize the non, the non-tuition cost, or in this case, fees at colleges.
Thank you for your question. Thank you for answering that, State Senate Member, State Senate Member Miguel Santiago. I do have another question from another resident. Her name is Dominga Hernandez, and she asks, do you need to be a citizen? Is green card okay for the college? Thanks.
We wrote the bill that, that says, that stays silent on that. So as far as I'm concerned, it, you should be able to enroll. And keep this in mind also, that we wrote in the bill, if a student does not qualify for the Pell Grant or the Cal Grant, that they can fill out the, the, the financial aid through the Dream Act. So, so we expect all colleges to not request any sort of, any sort of citizenship or any sort of residency from their students. But again, this has been, this has been one of those things that we, that we continue to push for. So yes, you can enroll.
Thank you for that. Looks like we have a bunch of questions coming in. The next one's from Facebook and it's from Marie Austin. She asks, does this include trade classes as well?
Yeah, I mean, anything that's done on a community college. Yep, anything that's done on a community college.
Oh, so it's quite, it's quite broad and extensive, the amount of programs it's getting tuition for. That's actually pretty amazing.
So long as it's in a community, so long as it's at a community college. And I see there my friend Scott Spunkin, hi Scott.
Good to see you, Assemblyman.
So for, the next one we have here is from a anonymous attendee asking, is the free two-year tuition just for students right out of high school or can anyone participate?
The way we wrote it says anybody can participate so long as it's a first time, full-time for two years. We've argued this over and over and over. Nowhere in the bill does it say you leave from a, that it has to be outgoing from a high school. And I know I wrote the bill, but, but there's, has been those campuses who have argued. And, and I know that, that Mr. Spunkin has seen other, other campuses outside of the LACC D community argue that, but the, but the bill's pretty clear.
College Board Member Scott Spunkin, have you seen this kind of being argued here and there?
Not in Los Angeles. The Assemblyman is, you know, very humble about his work. You know, community college was going up and up and up in price and becoming less and less affordable. And because of his experience as Board President at the LA Community College Board, when he got elected to the legislature, he did something that nobody thought could ever be done, which was turn back time and make community college free. When I began community college, it was $50 semester. Now it was in $1,500 plus a semester. But Assemblyman Santiago led the effort in California for one year free and nobody thought that would happen. And then he got two years free with the help of Governor Newsom. So he's done something nobody thought could be done. And you can see, the masked man is a, somebody that fights hard for his constituents and the people of California. There are districts that, that interpret the college promise differently and implement it differently. But as the Assemblyman said, it's not just about free college. There's all kinds of things like counseling, free computers this year in LA. There's lots of things being done for the college promise students. And that's all a result of Assemblyman Santiago's leadership and the support he got first from Governor Brown and then this last year from, or is it more than a year ago, from Governor Newsom.
Now, I'm going to get going, staffed up, they're calling me to present my bill. But Mr. Spunkin is as well-versed on the bill as I am, so I know he can answer all the questions. And I should give credit where credit is due, right? Because, because LACC D did, did help sponsor the bill and work for it. So you have to give credit where credit is due. So folks, I'm going to sign off because otherwise I lose my bill and we're, right? And we're going to be arguing that folks in the state of California should have, should have groceries for free if they're, if they're in need. So I'm not going to let that go. So thank you very much.
Oh, wow.
You guys have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, stay safe, Miguel.
So Scott, so as you kind of move forward with some of the few questions, I kind of want to give you the chance to give a little background of yourself first and how you feel that the community colleges are, you know, performing when it comes to this new school year and this COVID-19 pandemic we're all facing with.
Well, I can't thank you enough, Councilman, for having me. I've been impressed with all the great things you've done for Hawthorne since you got elected. Your leadership in Hawthorne in the region has been tremendous and I'm really grateful to be on this with you and your constituents. You know, I am in many ways, an unlikely elected official. I was a high school dropout and I went to community college and community college turned my life around. I grew up in Monterey Park, went to Pasadena City College after dropping out of high school at Markepo High School. And never in my wildest dreams did I think I could go from being a high school dropout to president of the largest community college. And one day, I got a phone call from the White House and I thought it was a joke or a wrong number. And it was the White House calling to ask me if I would serve on President Barack Obama's America's College Promise Advisory Board. Now, I told them I needed to think about it, I needed to ask my wife, I needed to talk to the district. And I said, can I call you back? And no one that I called after I got the call from the White House could believe that I said, let me think about it, let me get back to you. Because this chubby Jewish kid from the east side of Los Angeles being called on by the White House to help make college free across this country, no one could ever imagine. I never in my wildest dreams thought I'd be an elected official. I don't know about you, Councilman, but this was not part of my plan. But you know, giving back and community service was something I learned from my parents. And I'm very humbled and thankful to be with you today and be able to share the message of free college. I owe everything I have, my, my career, my family, my home, to community college. I would not be sitting with you today, two elected officials talking about how to help our community get educated for free if it weren't for community college. So that's a little bit about my history. If people want to know more about me, they can go to my website, spunkin.com and learn more and, and send me questions after this is over. I'm happy to engage, direct them. There are three colleges that are near Hawthorne. We have West LA College in Culver City, we have Southwest College in South Los Angeles, and we have Harbor College in the Harvard area. And the LA College Promise is our program and it comes with counseling. It comes with supportive services to help students not only get their first year free and their second year free if they go full-time, but it helps them navigate the process. It helps them, some of our college promise students have gotten internships and other programs. And as the Assemblyman said, one of the things that's unique about the college promise is whether you want just to go to college and transfer or you go to college full-time and you want a career as a nurse or an electrician, we've got that for you at the LA colleges and so do other colleges in our region. So the LA College Promise is our unique college promise. But thanks to the help of LA Mayor Garcetti, we were the first in the country of a big city to do this. But, but every city, thanks to Governor Brown, Miguel Santiago, and now Governor Newsom, every community college has a promise program. They're all a little bit different. I'd like to think that LA, because we were the first big city, big district, we're the largest district. I'm honored to serve on the largest community college district in the country. I, like you, represent a constituency, my constituency is a little over 5 million people. But nobody, unlike how everybody in Hawthorne knows you, Councilman, not everybody in LA knows that I'm their, one of their community college board members. So I'm going to leave it at that. I'm happy to answer any questions you have or, or your viewers and listeners have. And I'm just thankful to be with you today. I'm thankful to be on the Board of Trustees. I've served nine years and as you said in the opening, I'm the only board member to ever serve three terms as a board president. And I was the only community college elected official in the United States, elected by, selected by President Obama's team to work with him, Dr. Biden, and, and the Dr. Biden's husband, somebody named Joe Biden, to work on free college.
This is actually the first time kind of getting to hear your entire background. And it's great kind of having this back and forth and actually getting to see how community colleges within the district propelled you to where you are now. It's, it's crucial for residents to kind of see how access this kind of, these kind of programs really do help change lives. It's, it's not just here to fit, you know, one area or just one type of individual. It helps every single person. And the fact that you're, you're saying all these kinds of words about jumping on my town hall. No, honestly, with everything that you've done, especially for education and the community colleges and giving access to these programs to the residents here, especially with the 5 million that you're dealing with, I only have to deal with 89,000 individuals.
So yeah, but they're, they're the most important people in Hawthorne.
Oh, each and every single one.
That's right.
But no, I appreciate that. And with your, your leadership, especially on the college board, it kind of helps me propel myself even further. Because I was kind of like you in the, politics was never in my background, wasn't really in my wheelhouse. And then out of nowhere, you just get thrown into this new position of helping the people. And then once you find that joy, it just never stops. So I actually want to thank you for jumping on. I do have some questions here from the residents that would love to pick your brain if you're ready.
Love to.
We have one from Tony White asking, what if you don't qualify for any of these programs? And why is there a delay in contacting community colleges regarding fall semesters?
So many community colleges, all the LA community colleges, but almost all of them around Southern California have had to go because of the pandemic to a virtual environment. And it took us a little while to, to transfer from in-person registration and, and in-person counseling to online. Everything today is virtual in our district. We will start the new semester online. And so anybody can go to our colleges. I think it's a great solution for anybody who's been displaced from a university. You know, if you can't go back to college somewhere else, the all nine LA community colleges and all the community colleges are open. We're all open for business. You have to, as we all know, be patient in accessing services. But I guarantee you that if someone wants to go to any one of our colleges, that they can email them, they can call them, and we will get back to them. Our phones are still being answered, emails are being answered. People are working though, the vast majority of our staff, faculty, and all of our students are working from home. Nobody goes to class except in a very few number of career technical classes. We have people at LA Trade Tech that are back social distancing and wearing masks. But if you're taking an English class, a math class, the history class, kinesiology, you name it, they're all online. So it does, that's a really great thing. It's a, breaks down the barrier of transportation. So our students are saving money going online. Now, virtual education's a challenge for some, but we have tutoring online, you name it. We have services to meet the needs of, of everybody. And if, if there's a specific issue that someone needs help with, you know, every college is open. Every college president and administration is, is available. They're just not all in their offices and at their school. Many of them are working from home. And so there could be a delay, but we're, we're still here to help.
Thank you for answering that question. The same individual asked, so can you be a returning student and still be able to access these programs?
So you can't currently get free college under the college promise. That's not something that the law funded, but we do have other programs. And so if they'll fill out financial aid, if they, if they go online to the, if you want to do LA College Promise, you go to LA College Promise and you can fill out an application to be a part of the promise. But if you don't qualify for that, there are other programs. As Assemblyman Santiago mentioned, the FASPA form is the sort of the gateway financial aid for everybody. And know that community colleges, I'm really, really proud of this. When I was Board President, we set up a DACA committee. You know, community colleges, we don't ask, we don't care. We in fact encourage everyone to go. I was a high school dropout, you know, to this day, Councilman, I have no high school diploma. I have an associate's degree from Pasadena City College and I have a bachelor's degree from Cal State Northridge, but I never completed high school. And the fact is, is we don't discriminate based on your education background, where you grew up, what, how much money you make. So there are lots of programs to help your constituents at every college. And if they don't see the program at one of our colleges, you know, the great thing about Los Angeles and the great thing right now about online learning is they can go to any community college. Virtually every community college is providing every kind of course online. Now that will change when the pandemic is under control. But we expected LA community colleges to be online probably until 2021. And could be longer, but we're ready to help our students and we have virtual registration. We have phone, people can call, you can, you can get help with financial aid, counseling, free computers. Depending on your financial situation, whether we lend you a computer or give you a computer, will determine whether, how we service you. But every college in the region has a program like ours. I just believe LA, we have the most, the largest, most diverse population anywhere.
You know, you kind of touched on something and I remember, I remember hearing from State Senate Member Miguel Santiago also touching on it. These programs also deal with giving out resources for Chromebooks, laptops and things of that nature. It's not, it's not just for the tuition side of it. What else could be taken care of through this bill and program?
So the college promise, one of the things we So the College Promise, one of the things we've done this year with the help of Mayor Garcetti, is he got some additional money. So the College Promise covers tuition. So that's free. Other financial aid can cover books, transportation. And we have at the LA community colleges, a program, thanks to Mayor Garcetti, where we're giving free laptops to every College Promise participant. But remember, that's first time, full time. It doesn't mean you have to come straight out of high school. But any of your viewers and constituents who have kids or adult children that never went to college, family members that didn't get a chance to go before, if they go full time, first time, it's free. I also talked to the governor when he announced, Governor Newsom came to East LA Community College to announce free college for year two, because Governor Brown and Miguel Santiago did year one. That was following Mayor Garcetti and I doing LA's College Promise first. And there's been these successive expansions. Governor Newsom, before the pandemic, was going to expand free college. Unfortunately, as you know all too well, our communities have been hit really hard. And the state's budget is, is really down because people are hurting, tax revenues are down. And so I think it's going to take a little while to expand the College Promise. I'm hoping that the federal government will fund a GI bill for those displaced. I've been encouraging the governor, the legislature, to, for us to create free college for those workers displaced, but it hasn't happened yet. I would encourage your viewers to write to their assembly members, their state senators, and encourage, and their congress members, and say, we should have a new GI bill for every worker displaced. Because we're going to need to retrain them, and there is no system. The UCs, the CSUs, they're great. You know, I, I went to Cal State Northridge. All of these different colleges and universities are fantastic, but the cost of them is five times, 10 times higher than community college. So the place to retrain people is community college. So I encourage your viewers, the residents, to reach out to their congress member and say, fund things like the extension of unemployment, fund healthcare, fund housing, assistance for housing, and fund education. If the federal government will give us the money, we can make free college accessible to more of your residents.
Oh, wow. That's actually quite, quite, quite a phenomenal feat that the community colleges are actually pushing forward. And the board themselves are actually taking these initiatives with the governor and the other higher up electeds to kind of get these programs access to these residents. You know, I had one question here from a resident asking, the term College Promise may not let students know they can also go to a JC for a trade. Is there any way of kind of addressing that, or, or is there a way of kind of marking it out there better for them to understand this?
Well, I think it's a, a good point to, for people to understand that free college at the LA community colleges means you can take any classes for free. You can study whatever you want. That's one of the great things about what California did and, and Los Angeles is building on. And, you know, we started it in LA and they expanded it. There were some other cities, Long Beach. And I, one other community had a free college program before the state did it. But I think we can do a better job. One of the reasons I was so excited to come on with you today is to talk about how anyone going full time, first time can get it free. And it doesn't matter who you are, where you come from, or what you're studying. And so hopefully with the help of your listeners, your community and yourself, we can let people know that free college is accessible for anything the community colleges teach.
You know, how long has this program been, been going for, this free tuition?
So we've only been doing it for a little over about three years. Now, there was financial based, there was a thing called a bog waiver, which predates that, that if your family made less than a certain amount, you were able to get free. What the LA College Promise did is it said, anyone that goes full, first time, full time can get free. And my hope, if I'm able to do what, you know, you're doing, run for office and get elected again, if we get elected, my goal is to expand so that part-time students get free college. Because, you know, it's not just those going full time that need free. Those hardworking people that work and go to school part-time and have families, they need free college too. So it's just going to take a little longer because of the pandemic and the economic downturn. But I am determined, sorry, I am determined to fight for free college. You know, my parents, my mom, who's almost 80 years old and just called, she, she remembers when community college was free. My dad went to East LA Community College, my late father, and went on to be a teacher in LA Unified, and it was free. When I went, it was only $50. It was, when we started free, and for those that don't get free, it's about $1,500 to go to community college. Whereas you can pay all in to go to a UC, you can get paid $50,000 or $60,000. So community college is the best deal for the da holler. And I would encourage anyone who needs one class or wants a certificate in anything from being a dental hygienist to learning how to do hair. I really think that it's really life-changing, what our community colleges do for people of Hawthorne and people across LA County.
And you're, you're absolutely right on, on those comments. What's unique is actually addressing the part-time students as well. Especially with now the whole economic downturn, having, you know, these parents or these new students coming in to only rely on one source of income or to be a full-time student altogether, is going to be a very daunting task, especially as we kind of progress through this next upcoming year. So having that, that goal of getting part-time students as well, free college tuition, if you can do that, it's a home run. So I'm hoping that you're back in office to, to follow up on this commitment. As I know, there's a lot of residents, both in Hawthorne and the surrounding cities, that can take advantage of that. And to kind of give a little, a few updates from our audience here, we have a resident, Elaine Duffy. Elaine, thank you for jumping on and joining me today, and LA College Board Member Scott Svankin. She had a comment mentioning how her daughter just transferred from the Honors Transfer Program at El Camino to UCLA, and her son, which was an old Bishop Montgomery student, a classmate of mine, transferred from El Camino's honors to UCSD. Saved a lot of money that way, thanks to El Camino. Go Bruins and go Tritons.
You know, she's right. That's a great personal testimony. It's wonderful that she helped her kids get a good start at community college. You know, it doesn't matter to me which community college you go to, just go. And they all can give you a better start. You know, the transfer rate from community colleges to the UCs and is higher than the acceptance rate for freshmen. So if, if somebody comes from your community and they first go to a community college, whether it's El Camino or, or Harbor College or Southwest or, or West, if they first go to a community college, getting into UCLA is easier. Getting into UC Berkeley or Cal State LA, it's easier to get in as a transfer student. And it doesn't matter which community college you go to, to be honest. I'm partial to ours, but I, I, I recognize that the community colleges that surround us, like El Camino and Santa Monica and Pasadena, they are fantastic community colleges. And I, I think it's a really good personal story that her, her children, your friends, your, your constituents, went from their local community college onto higher education. That's a great testament to what we do. That's a great example of the success of what community colleges can do for your residents.
You know, and, and I kind of want to touch on that, how it's, you know, the community college route almost kind of gets this weird kind of dark shadow on it, as it's not seen as, you know, on par with the surrounding systems and the surrounding, you know, UC or private school institutions. Why is that? And is there a way to kind of address this? There's one resident here by Maria Austin asking, you know, we need to let high school students know it's not just for first two years of college. And are there ways for my office and your office to promote this new shining beacon within the community college program?
Yeah, you know, I think the, the challenge about community college and our sort of reputation issues are historic. In California, they used to be called, many of our colleges were called junior colleges. And, and that, that concept that people, our parents grew up with, my parents grew up with, that community colleges was a junior to the CSUs and UCs. You know, California designed higher education, first two years at community college, then to the CSU, and then graduate school traditionally was at the UCs. That changed over time. So I think with the economics of community college being so affordable, with the opportunity to transfer to any college they want to, if they do well, I think we can, I think we can change our image, but it's going to take telling the story of people that succeed, like your constituents that transfer. I think we need to, to make sure young people know that leaving home at 18 may be sexy and fun, but it, they may get a better education. Our classes, you know, I have a, I have a daughter who was a freshman at a UC. And brilliant kid, unbelievably smart. I wish she had gone to a community college. Between the cost of the community college, missing her when, because she went up north. And the fact is, is that she had classes with 200 or 300 students. And at the LA community colleges, at El Camino, at any of our colleges, you'll have a class with 30 students, maybe 50. Instead of, if you go to a UC or a private, you'll have a freshman English with 200 people, 300 people. You'll have a communications class your freshman year with 100, 200 people. We don't generally have hardly any classes that big. And in fact, you know, at our colleges, we're, we've reduced this coming year. We're making our classes smaller so that our students can get a more personalized education. And that's the kind of thing, that's the difference. The difference is, you know, I still remember my, my communications professor, Tony Jordan Gillis. And he, he passed away, but, you know, he made college fun. You don't have at the community colleges, teachers assistants teaching college. Now, while that may be good at the UCs, you know, to pay $35,000, $40,000 a year to go to a university and get somebody who's studying to be a professor versus our staff who are full college faculty, full-time college faculty, sometimes part-time college faculty, but well-trained, you know, the, the, the advantage is smaller classes, actual faculty teaching the classes, not student teachers. And no offense to anybody, like my brother was a, is a college professor, and he taught while going to graduate school. Those are smart people who are very dedicated, but they're new in their career. Our faculty are the most experienced. So I think, I think just going to take work from people like you and I to tell people that community college is not less than, it's not second to Cal State or UCs. We're just as good, if not better, and we're cheaper. So it's a better deal. If people want to pay for the, the name brand, they can go to a UC or, or USC or, you know. And I have, I have family members that are Trojans, and I have friends that are Bruins. But I got a better, cheaper education, and I think I'm doing just okay.
That, yeah, by everything you've been doing, that's absolutely right. You know, kind of, before I get a few more questions from the residents, I remember as the discussion kind of went forward, that there's also funds towards guidance counselors when it comes to the community, community college domain. You know, that's something that we're really struggling here on the high, high school side. These, these funds and these guidance counselors, are they just touching on the academic side, or is it on everything else? What does that look like?
You know, that's a great question. We have mostly academic counselors, but we do have job. At, at all of our colleges, we have places where people can go if they're looking for a job. And we have job centers funded by either the city of LA or the county to help people with, find jobs. So there, there are opportunities at all of our colleges. And I will tell you, in this virtual environment, you know, there are challenges. But both Governor Newsom and our colleges are trying to connect people to jobs. And so the, the governor's website has a place where people can go and, and connect with jobs. We have on our campuses places where students can go and get, get some help with counseling for jobs. And we have a lot of career technical opportunities, a lot of pathways to careers. Whether, like I said, Harbor College has a dental hygiene program that Vice President Biden actually visited a few years ago. I was able to shoot, you know, talk to him at West LA College, where we have the only dental hygiene program that gives a bachelor's degree. One of the things that's interesting is there are a few programs across California where community colleges, for the price of a community college, are giving bachelor's degrees. And that was a pilot program that I'm hoping we expand on, where you can get certain technical degrees that are advanced. There were universities giving bachelor's degrees in dental hygiene, but there were so few of them that the state of California allowed West, was it Harvard? No, it was West LA College. Sorry, I apologize. It's West Los Angeles College in, in Culver City gives a bachelor's degree in dental hygiene. And it's the same cost, the same cost as going to a community college for four years, which is, which is less than 5% or 10% of the cost of going to a university.
I have to agree on that. My, my sister took the same route. She went to El Camino and Harbor College. She was kind of a bookworm, where she kind of attacked both community colleges at the same time, and then transferred to Pepperdine University, where she got her MBA. So actually taking that route, she did mention how the class sizes were tremendously smaller than what her friends were going through from the UC systems. I remember my time going through UC Riverside. You are right, you are in their freshman class with 130, 150, 200 students, and you're using the old theater or the current theater, you know, setup as your classroom. And that's how big it is, is that you're using a theater room as a, a, you know, as a place of study. And the, you know, the professors would kind of, you know, glance over everybody, but that whole interaction of one-on-one, you do kind of lose that in these, you know, bigger universities. You know, and, and there's, there's another question from a resident here asking from Veronica Gutierrez. Do students have to maintain a certain GPA to maintain free tuition for, for, for the first two years, or?
I, you know, I believe we said it, that they had to have a passing, that, that they had to have. I, I, I want to say, I have to, I should double check it, because that, that's a really important fact. I, I think it's a C. I don't think, I think as long as they pass their classes, I think they'll, they, they get to, they can, they can continue in the free program. I, I think it's a C average, is my recollection.
That's actually pretty good. That's great actually to hear. I have another question from a resident called, from Dee Johnson. Is there a certain age range requirement for these free classes and tuition?
None. As long as you haven't gone before. Financial aid at any college is limited. And so if you've accessed it, you, you don't, you may not be eligible for all of it again. But if you've never gone to college, whether you're 15 or 50 or 60 or 70, if you've never gone, you go first time, full time, we're happy to have you. And there's plenty of room, you know, in this virtual environment. You know, you, you can find classes at different colleges. In the old days, students sometimes would have to go to their home college and then go to another one because they couldn't get a class. Well, now you can go to one college for one class and another college for another. Now, we, it's best to stay all at one college if you can get your classes. But if you, if there's some class you want at, at any of the nine colleges, I mean, we have colleges from the top of the San Fernando Valley down to the south part of Los Angeles. And the same thing's generally true with other college districts is, is you don't have to live in the community to go to El Camino. You don't have to live in Woodland Hills to go to Pierce College. You don't have to live in downtown LA to go to LA Trade Tech. If there's a program you want at that college, right now, the fact that we're virtual, now things may get harder when they, we open up again next year sometime. But I would encourage people to look for the kind of thing they want to study for their lives and improve their lives. Community college is the great equalizer. We transform people's lives. I'm an example of it. There's, your constituents' kids are an example of it. Whether you want to go to Harvard after going to a community college, you can do it. There are people that have gone to community college and transferred to Harvard, Yale, Stanford. There are people that have gone to community college and transferred to Harvard, Yale, Stanford. They all take our students. Now, it's a lot easier to go from an LA community college to UCLA or Berkeley, but you still can do it if you, if you put your mind to it and work hard.
That's actually, thank you for answering that question for, for Dee Johnson. We also have another question, or possibly a comment from Elaine Duffy regarding dark shadow. Says that your diploma says UCLA or UCSD, or wherever you transferred to, it does say I went to a community college on it. I remind my kids of this all the time and my students. That's actually a pretty unique link to, I was the first time I've actually heard that.
I'm sorry, did she say it does or it doesn't? Because my, my degree from Cal State Northridge does not say I went to a community college.
Oh, I'm sorry, it, it doesn't say?
Yeah, that is, that's one of the great things about, about going to a community college is if you go to UCLA or Berkeley or, you know, and you graduate after having transferred from, from Southwest or West LA or Harvard College, any of the colleges, Trade Tech, doesn't matter which college you went to your first two years. You could go anywhere, and the college you graduate from, that's the college that people know about. It's also unfortunately, sometimes the college people remember when they make donations. And so UCLA has a bigger endowment, Stanford has big endowments. Our community colleges have small foundations to try to help our students. But the good news is through this pandemic, a lot of people and corporations have been donating to our colleges. That's allowed us to give free Chromebooks to hundreds of students. So, you know, there has been a silver lining to the pandemic, and that is that a lot of people are stepping up, and it gives us a chance to help more people because of good corporations donating to help our students. Our students are the most diverse, and in many ways, the neediest of any system, because we're in the neighborhood where they live. And doesn't, as, as you just read, your, your degree from a university, it doesn't say you went to a community college first. We just, I just hope, and I'll never forget. I mentioned I went to Pasadena City College after being a high school dropout in almost every speech I give. And I, I used to be ashamed until President Obama told me it was a good story when I met him at Trade Tech in a hallway. I used to be ashamed that I was a high school dropout. Now I'm proud that I overcame some struggles, and I'm able to now help other people go to community college.
Actually, your story in itself is, is quite inspiring for other students or other individuals trying to progress through the whole community college arena. And there is a light at the end of the tunnel. They shouldn't see it as, oh, I was a dropout, my life is over, it's done. You're, you're kind of showing that aspect of you just started, basically. There's, there's never a, a, a losing battle, a never losing front when it's gaining education. Yourself and the rest of your college board trustees have actually made it a lot easier for residents and my constituents to gain access to these different roads, to kind of reclassify themselves, especially if they wanted to get, you know, a different job, or kind of see themselves in a different position or a different light, or just to improve their lives in general. And that's what we kind of tend to forget, is that community colleges isn't just a stepping stone to try and get into a four-year university. It's also areas where, and assets you can utilize to redefine your current life, especially for the future for your families. You know, I'll take a few more.
Well, can I share one, one little quick thing for your listeners? You know, we have a partnership from East LA Community College with UPS. And right now during COVID, one of the industries that's booming is the logistics industry, the moving of, of goods and services. And companies like UPS, Amazon, they're, they have lots of jobs. And we actually train people to go to work for UPS. We have a, a very special partnership with them. So if somebody that's watching and listening wants an opportunity to get into UPS, they can go to East LA Community College, take the logistics classes, get in on the ground floor, and, and UPS looks for people that start with them to become management. So it's one of the best paying corporations for entry-level people. And there, so there's very specific opportunities to get careers and not jobs at some of our colleges. We also have a program out of other colleges where we work with Apple, with, you know, there's different partnerships at different colleges. So it's really a, a good opportunity for the people of Hawthorne, your residents, your constituents, to go and look at the colleges in Los Angeles, to go to the LA Community College website, and look for something that interests them.
Actually, thank you for giving that little, little tidbit of information. I have a few more questions, and then we'll kind of wrap up this wonderful town hall, giving, you know, where they can contact you for further information. Because I know there's a lot of residents that are, you know, eager to kind of gain access to these free college tuition classes, and especially now after the whole economic downturn, you know, re, gaining new job skillsets to kind of help them progress through this up, next upcoming year, increase their source of revenue, increase their quality of life, especially for our small businesses here in, in the city of Hawthorne. It's, it's a crucial aspect of, of that growth, especially within the middle class, of having access to education that really does start to change things. And we kind of lose sight of that, you know, as we kind of look at other areas or things that are, you know, shinier or grander. But community colleges is really the backbone of re, redefining a community. Hence the word community college. You know, I, I have a question from Veronica Gutierrez. Says, I think for data purposes, many high schools may not promote JCs as much because they want to be able to show large percentages going straight into a four-year university. Students need to visit their college centers and get informed. You know, that's a very good point she, she kind of brings up. Does that, does that kind of hurt the whole aspect of JCs and community colleges when you, you have these high schools kind of pushing towards the four-year route more often than?
Yeah, you know, it's often that, that college counselors at high schools encourage their kids to go to the sort of most elite college they can get into, with not always a regard for what's, you know, sort of most accessible. And community colleges, we are the most accessible, most affordable opportunity there is. So we have some work to do with promoting ourselves. I think the fact that the pandemic has, is preventing a lot of young people from going to college, literally going to college, that a lot of those students hopefully will come to us, will save their families tens of thousands of dollars every year, and that will help them get through debt-free. That was originally, you know, when I talked to Vice President Biden at West LA College when he visited us, one of the things he said was that he and Barack Obama wanted to make two years of free for everybody. That was their ultimate goal. They didn't get there, they didn't even, because of the dynamics in Congress, they didn't get free college across the country. States and community colleges did it on their own, and that was the college promise that I worked on, is we help states and communities across the country do it themselves, because Congress didn't fund this. In California, it was funded because of the bills of Miguel Santiago and Governor Brown's help, and then Governor Newsom. So I think it's a really good point. But if parents, the great thing about what you're doing today and what you're doing in your community, and hopefully other elected officials will do, is you're educating the parents and the voters so that they can say to their kids, hey, if you go to a community college, I can help you in, you know, get, graduate from a college, university with less debt. You know, I'm offering my daughter, if, if she works hard, you know, I'm worried that she's going to end up having debt when she's done with UC and goes to grad school because she wants to go to grad school. If she had gone to community college, there would have been more money available. So it's an economic decision. And so for families that work hard, which is most of Los Angeles County, you know, not the, the one percent of the people who can afford to go anywhere they want, that's not people like me or people in your community. You know, my dad was a school teacher. I work for the county of Los Angeles. I'm a government employee. So I just worry about our kids getting debt. It's one of the biggest challenges for young people today is college debt. And so your constituent that talked about how do we encourage counselors to encourage kids to go to two-year, first two years of college, I think we need to make sure that parents are informed that it'll help their families and their kids graduate with less debt. It's, it's something that'll help the entire family.
You know, that's a very big topic that you touched on is, you know, a lot of times when you see these students, you know, coming out of the UC system or a private school, the amount of debt they, you know, acquire throughout that term, they're still paying it off well into their thirties. It's a lot, and it kind of hinders them from, you know, buying that new car or getting the new house with the new family. It's, so actually having it put in that perspective and kind of marketing in a, in a way that, it's, there's a pro and cons. Yes, you can go for the traditional four-year route, but at the same time, if you go to the community college route, look at everything that you could also gain, plus an actual degree. You know, I, I don't think it's been done so much where you're, you know, marketing heavily on how much money you can actually be saving and the amount of debt you won't have that's going to be crushing you as you finally graduate.
Well, there's some studies out there that have been done that if you, you, you can save your family thirty to sixty thousand dollars if you go to your first two years at community college. So the information's out there, we just haven't done a good enough job at educating parents and families and young people. You know, my daughter wanted to go away. She wanted her independence. And, you know, my son, hope, you know, may, I'm hoping will take a different route. But no matter what they do, we always want, you know, every parent's dream, no matter where you're from or what you do, is that their kids have a better life. And I'm thankful for what community colleges did for me, and I know they can do the same for the people in your community. They can help them get to a university, their kids. They can help them get a better job. They can help them get a good career. There's so much our community colleges do. And the fact that you took time today to highlight it for your constituents shows the kind of leader you are, that you want your constituents to be educated, informed, empowered, so they can have better lives. I guarantee you that we're going to get people today who are going to help their kids go online to the LA Community College website and, and register and enroll, because school's going to start in a couple of weeks. And we, if, if anybody wants, even if they don't qualify for full-time, first time, full-time, it's the most affordable thing there is. My daughter took a summer school math class at one of the colleges, and it was a hundred and fifty dollars. And that same class at UC would have been fifteen hundred dollars. Same exact class, a hundred and fifty dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. So I, I, she is, she is brilliant, but doesn't always consider how much it costs dad. For those that, you know, haven't had a chance. The other thing to know, since you're, you know, a, a bright young leader, is people need to start saving for their kids' college, either before they have the kid or once that kid's born. Because college today, if you ask somebody, how much will it cost? It's going to cost a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars to get a bachelor's degree, depending on where you go. A hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars. If you want to go to a UC for four years, you're going to spend somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars if you go to four years of college.
Now, can you imagine if you took that on all as debt? You would be paying that back, oh, no, that's just too much. And that's going to be the average?
Yeah, my brother is, I, I'm fifty-four. My brother today, happy birthday to my big brother Craig, is a college professor in Denver, Colorado. Don't know if he's a viewer of yours, but he's in Denver. And he, he went to, got his PhD at UC Riverside. And he recently, I think, paid off his debt from his PhD. So the, the thing people need to think about when they get debt is what kind of career are they going to have, and how long will it take them to pay off their debt? And debt's a terrible thing. One of the things we really need to do as a society is value college and encourage everybody, go two years to a community college, two years to a Cal State, and two years to a graduate program at UCs. If we did that, there, people would be graduating with a whole lot less debt.
You know, we'll take one more question, and then we'll kind of wrap up and also kind of see how I can help you push this message through throughout the high schools here in my district. And it comes from Mia Mahondosi. She asks, what about people that are not entry-level but looking to change careers?
So we have some amazing programs, but unfortunately, the financial aid is, is based on income and based on, mostly income, actually. So depending on her income, she can, she can apply for financial aid at any one of the, any college she goes to. It's, the form's called FASFA, it's a federal form, and it, and every college has a financial aid office. Every college has one. And so she contacts the college, and we, we're the, we're the best place to get retrained. So if, if there's a profession that you can get a certificate in, you know, that, I don't know if she is handy, but there's a shortage of welders. You know, you can make a hundred thousand dollars as a welder if you go through a welding program and graduate from one of our colleges. You can dental hygiene, dental hygiene, you can make a lot of money. There's so, we have, we have programs with, in technology now. There's lots of opportunity to get retrained at our colleges. And we have programs nights and weekends, depending on the program. And that's true at community colleges all across Southern California. So community colleges are designed for not just first time, not just full-time. You know, the vast majority of our students are part-time, and many of them are returning students who want a better life and a better career.
You know, you kind of touched on another amazing point, especially on the welding side. A lot of residents and constituents don't know that some of these trade options are actually very lucrative. I remember sitting down with, you know, SpaceX, and there was actually a, a short supply of welders and certain trade jobs. And they were, they were clocking in at like high-six-figure jobs starting.
Right.
Maybe also advertising that, letting the residents see that, you know, going the community college route, picking up a trade, you're coming out with six figures and no debt.
Yeah, well, you know, in all of the trades, that's a really great issue, Councilman. In a lot of the trades, in, in the carpenters' union, in the electrical workers' union, you, in the painters, in a lot of these unions, the members, the, your constituents are there and they're aging. You know, we're all aging, not you, you, you know, you, you, you're getting younger. You got elected and you got younger. But, you know, I began my public service at, at thirty-two, and I actually really began it at, at like nineteen or twenty when I first worked for the late mayor, Tom Bradley. So my very first job was working for the, the mayor, Mayor Bradley in Los Angeles. But the, our workforce is aging, and so there's going to be a lot of really great opportunities to make money. And if, if you can do things with your hands and are good at math, you can go to one of our colleges and get, and then get connected with a trade union, and you can get a job that pays six figures, working as an electrician or carpenter or a welder. So many great opportunities out there. I wish I, I could fix something myself. My shower's clogged, I call a plumber. I wish I could do it myself. And so for those of you who just want to learn to do it yourself or want a career in it at LA Trade Tech or others, other colleges of ours, we have programs that help people get careers, the UPS program at, at East LA. So you hit the nail on the head, Councilman. The partnership with any of the community colleges in your area are, is critical. And if you can be that champion in, in the city of Hawthorne, making sure that you connect with the colleges around you, your residents, and that you provide a link to how to get the LA College Promise and the program, the, the College Promise at El Camino. If you place those on your website and promote them to your city, you will transform the lives, improve the lives of the people you serve. And that's what public service is all about. That's why you and I got into this, is to help people make their lives better. Fix potholes, make sure the trash is picked up, make sure people have access to the things they need. And that's why we're here. I admire you a lot. I'm thrilled to have been here with you today. If, I'm going to, you know, sign off and just watch and listen as you give your update. I've seen on Facebook some of your updates, and it's, it's remarkable that you're delivering to your constituents the kind of service that, you know, people in Hawthorne and people across Los Angeles County haven't had. And I, I applaud you for doing this.
No, thank you for, for all the hard work. No, thank you for for all the hard work you're doing. And just saying that, coming from someone with your background and your caliber, actually kind of gives me that extra level of confidence, knowing that I'm on the right track. Gaining your approval and then gain the approval of State Senate Member Miguel Santiago, especially being at my age, it's it's astounding. I do shake every once in a while being on some of these town halls. With you guys being in there for so long, just the amount of knowledge and experience that you've gained over the years and for me to kind of tap into and kind of learn. Like you said, it's part of being a public servant and working hand in hand with each other. So actually, I have to thank you for actually pushing me forward and continuing my drive. And now hearing the background story of you being a college dropout and
High school, high school dropout.
High school, I'm sorry, high school dropout, right. And still being able to be in the same room with President Barack Obama, Vice President Joe Biden, all these other high caliber elected officials, when at one point you just thought, it's over. And community college is what got you there. And so the anyway, I can kind of push that message forward. I do want to kind of put my those links on my website. And all the programs that, you know, yourself or and, you know, the State Senate Member Miguel Santiago have been pushing forward. I do want to have that information easily accessible to my constituents, especially to these upcoming high school senior grads who don't know, you know, which way to go or what that next step in life is. Is there any other way that I can kind of get that message out or any way?
Well, I think it'd be great for you and the school board, the high schools in your community, for us to to co-host with your leadership, hopefully as mayor, that College Promise Day, so that all of the families and all the seniors know that they can go for free. We really should host something. It's hard to do it now, other than virtually, and you guys seem to have that down. But maybe maybe do a virtual event for all the high school seniors and their parents and do an annual celebration in person next year for before everybody graduates as people are selecting, you know, where they're going to go, so that we can make the case smaller class size, more affordable, closer to home. And and you get more for for, you know, your dollar if you go to community college. And if if they don't get into their first choice, you go first to community college, you can transfer to your first choice.
Oh, yeah, I've I've had many colleagues go that same route where they want to go to UCLA or they want to go to Stanford. They took advantage of those first two years, knocked it out of the park, and they're getting their graduate degrees now from the same university that the community college route helped them get into. Those are amazing ideas and I actually love the aspect of having a a yearly kind of meeting or get together, addressing these issues and letting these students know, like, you know, there's another route. Like, you don't have to stop going to school, you don't have to worry about crushing debt after you graduate. There's this whole plethora of programs and available resources, and you'll get the same education on, it's just a brand. All you're doing is paying the extra value to have a certain brand on your certificate. But it's all the same quality of education. You know, is is so is that kind of wrapping it before I get into the whole City Hall and the more mundane, boring aspect of this town hall? Is there is there a contact or a website?
Yeah, absolutely. So my email, if anybody wants to email me, it's my name. So as you see on the screen, it's Scott, S C O T T. Then you put the at sign in the middle, svonkin, S V O N K I N dot com, scott@svonkin.com. So if they look at my name, I'm going to leave my name up there, I'm going to go dark and listen to you. But if they if they send an email to scott@svonkin.com, I'm happy to connect them with people in our district that can help them. You know, I, like you, are part-time elected officials. My full-time job is a public servant for the county. And I just want to thank you for what you're doing. I look forward to seeing you do this and much more. And I'm I'm sure, like Miguel Santiago and all the other guests you brought to your community, we're we're grateful to have you as a partner in Hawthorne and keep up the good work. And I look forward to working with you and the your constituents to all the way for the next five or 10 years.
Thank you so much, Scott, for that. And same same on my side, I can't wait to see what our future kind of holds. And whatever you need from my side to make sure that you stay in that position, continuing your efforts in helping not only my constituents, but, you know, the surrounding cities, by all means, ask and we'll be out there with you, pushing and fighting all the way through.
Great, thank you. Have a have a good rest of your show or your town hall. Bye-bye.
Bye. So everyone, so that kind of kind of touches base and kind of finishes on the education aspect of our town hall with the College Board, Trustee Scott Svankin and State Senate Member Miguel Santiago. So for the information kind of relay tonight, I will be posting all these links on my website. I'll also be sending out an email blast with the link, providing the recent video today we're holding now. And, you know, any of the other issues that we kind of touched on today and really kind of, you know, making sure that you as residents have access to this information. And let's see, Elaine. So for the for the next few, no, I say for the next, you know, 15 to 20 minutes, I'm going to, you know, kind of go over a any questions that any of you might have regarding, you know, the city, any updates. At the same time, kind of answer some of the questions that are still left here. Remember, I do still have another town hall coming up this Thursday. It's been a very, very busy week. We're going to talk about the Sentinel Valley School Board and how that school year is going to look forward to as the school year is about to start in just a couple of weeks. So really getting that information out there and having the parents being able to ask the superintendent themselves, you know, certain questions that are still not resolved or, you know, underlying fears that they might have with this new upcoming school year, as we kind of push forward with the pandemic fight. So I see here from Elaine Duffy, you you mentioned that, could I push out email? Scott Funkin email, Scott Svankin's email. Let me take care of that right now. I'm also kind of touched base on, so there is an upcoming council meeting tomorrow at 6:00. So if any of you want to see what is on the agenda or have any issues that you want me to bring up for the upcoming meeting, please let me know. Let's see, for the COVID-19 Testing Center, I'm happy to say that I'm seeing a lot of, you know, a lot more residents using and accessing my Eventbrite post regarding the walk-in same-day testing. We were at 20 individuals a day Hawthorne residents can do same-day walk-in. We're now up to 40. And and the reason for that is the capacity of the COVID Testing Center has went, has increased from 132 tests per day to now 264. So we have two separate lanes inside, really trying to move everything faster and smoother. But it, take advantage of it now. You do not need insurance, you do not have to show symptoms. Go onto lhic.care, sign up for your patient ID number and then quickly jump onto my website, click the, you know, walk-in pass, register, print it out, five, 10 minutes, you're in and out. And within 48 to 72 hours, you'll have your, you know, diagnosis. With that, let me make sure I get Scott Svankin's email out. Here we go. I want to put it in the chat box here this way, you know, for those still watching and those watching later on can just copy and paste and ask as many questions to either to hosts that I had on today. And I'll also place in there, State Senate Member Miguel Santiago's email as well to kind of, you know, for you to touch base with him, his bill, and, you know, other questions that you might have coming up or you weren't able to ask. I'm gaining access to those free college tuition funds. Let me see. It's funny how I could have hopefully I can get the here we go. Maybe they have someone on maybe having it placed on one more time for the slide pertaining both emails for both hosts for the residents kind of write down and jot down. If you can kind of put that on the screen as well. If possible. Let's see. There we are. Copy, I'm going to place it here now, let's see. That is the email to Los Angeles Community College Board Trustee Scott Svankin and Miguel Santiago. Let's see, you know, I found that one. You know, as I continue to try and look for Miguel Santiago's email, it's always hard going through your entire Yeah, as we upload that, let's see. What other questions can I? So yeah, to answer your question, Veronica, yes, I will have all this posted and kind of disseminate out there to all the residents, putting it on the front of my website as well as a link on my Facebook, Instagram, and every other platform I have access to, to really kind of get this information out there. And, you know, we're now working with the, you know, Sentinel School Board and the school district, you know, maybe kind of working from now into creating that, you know, graduation College Promise Day. I think it's an amazing idea to kind of, you know, give the students that are going into their college years, these options are now available to them, the perks and the pros for them, and to not kind of give the, you know, have the same looked down upon feel when it comes to JCs and two-year colleges. As we kind of went over today, going after a trade itself, especially welding here in SpaceX, there you know, you're going in there with a starting position at six figures. And that's not the only kind of trade that's offering those kind of benefits. It goes to welding, mechanics, just just a whole wide array of options. And for those that, you know, just, you know, recently lost their job because of the economic downturn of COVID or, you know, just wanting to trust, increase their quality of life, especially for their family, picking up a a few college courses here, especially from your community college at no expense can really help transform your future. Let's see. Mia, you ask, are you going to have more information on available jobs? Specifically for people who lost their job due to COVID. Now, Mia, if you can kind of give me a little more insight on available jobs as within the city itself or the surrounding cities, if you can give me more information so I can better answer your question. Elaine, thank you so much for for passing on to the counselors and to her connections to the high schools nearby. I'm honestly kind of relaying this information to all the parents. I think it's really going to change how, you know, JCs and community colleges are looked upon. Maybe, you know, marketing the side of you don't have to go to get a bachelor's degree and come out with a crushing debt. You could actually kind of plan out your future while still gaining a phenomenal education. You know, at the end of the day, you're just paying for a brand name. It's like, it's like kind of going to getting a laptop. You can go to Apple and, you know, play, pay that higher premium price, but essentially it's doing the same thing as, you know, the computer right next to it. We just have to kind of go and kind of educate not only the parents, but the the school districts themselves on why they should promote these programs and not just focus heavily on traditional four-year institutions. You know, it could scare a lot of students away, it can hurt their confidence and making them not want to progress forward. Me being heavy into education, you know, just wrapping up both my masters at USC, it it could be a very daunting task. So to make that road easier for, you know, your children, my colleagues and other individuals out there, that's basically what a public servant is supposed to do. Gracilia Perez asks, do you know if animal control is doing anything to capture that coyotes that roam Hawthorne? You know, actually, it has, there has been a recent uptick in the amount of coyote sightings, especially near the Boddie Park area and the area that they kind of share borders in Lawndale. So we are moving forward on, at least animal control is moving forward on finding additional ways to combat this. They have put me in touch with a different department, actually, that specifically deals with coyote sightings within a city. So I'm going to start placing those resources and that contact number on my website and, you know, all my other platforms. So contacting this, I think it was the Wildlife Wildlife Conservation Center. What they do regionally is with these types of findings, they'll go out themselves and capture and relocate these coyotes to a more humane area. This way, they can kind of be amongst their, you know, their own environment, away from the residents at the same time, really trying to, you know, push themselves of having a, you know, a better quality of life as an animal. So yeah, no, please, I'll follow up with that. I'll have that also included in the last email. I've been getting a lot of calls and emails from residents. With the increase in coyote sightings, I had no idea that was getting to this degree where you're having individuals scared that their, you know, son or daughter is going to be kidnapped from the front porch by a wild coyote. Usually that's something you hear out in the Wild West. But no, we are addressing that issue. And we are now bringing in this other organization to help bolster our animal control itself and to, you know, addressing the coyote issue. Mia, you're mentioning from from the question prior about the job posting and resources, you followed with, because I look at myself and my peers and we are all professionals who lost our jobs and keep applying. You followed with, because I look at myself and my peers and we are all professionals who lost our jobs and keep applying, but receiving any, oh, but not receiving any callbacks nor an interview. Maybe we could have a resources, resources on actual jobs for people with experience or any advice or resources that could help. You know, it's a very good idea and a very good, you know, very good initiative. I'm going to start looking into that. Any kind of on my resources page on my haterhawthorne.com, taking the information from the surrounding community colleges and the other electeds and kind of putting these potential job offers on one central location, kind of like a master file. Because it is kind of, it's not real, it's not fair to have, to go through this whole pandemic and economic downturn that is no fault of, as, as no fault to you to kind of crush down on, you know, not only your family's budget, but what your outlook for the future was. So I do agree that it's, it's, it's rough and it's hard to go after interview and interview and interview to not really see any light of the tunnel. So Mia, rest assured that I will start moving on, creating a master list, working with El Camino and the surrounding community colleges to gather up as many resources and job offerings that you can utilize. It is a shame and it's, and this shouldn't happen where you're having skilled individuals with a lot of experience not being able to get at least one job interview callback. It seems a little backwards. You know, we're trying to help each other, you know, help humanity get back on our feet. We're promoting small businesses, but to kind of see this run-of-the-mill spit out of highly qualified individuals. And usually it's, it's the part of actually having access to the information. Sometimes there are jobs out there that are available, but it's hidden. So I'll do the work for you. I'll put that all in a list. This is something I used to do, you know, back at, you know, my MBA program is finding all the hidden gems. Dig deep and really make these connections. You never know where these connections might take you. And it's all about social networking. So this is something that is definitely in my wheelhouse, something I love is making connections and business growth. So, oh, it's going to be a fun project for me at least. It's more of a stress relief, even though it seems like work. Let's see, the next question. Let's see. We have another question here saying from Brenda Palmer asking that yes, posting jobs and contracting opportunities for professionals would be great. Right, it is, it is. The more we can kind of come together and collaborate, make this social economic foundation for, you know, our own community. That's going to be the best way to really get us out of this whole pandemic economic downturn. Gracilia Perez, you mentioned that you saw a coyote in your back, in your backyard on Friday night. Oh wow, if you, if you can shoot me a, a private message with your address and a contact number that I can have the animal control and this new organization that we're working with, address the coyote in your backyard. You should not have to deal with it and have it as your neighbor. So please let me know right away. Shoot me a message, your address, and I'll send the email out, see seeing myself and yourself with animal control and the new animal control organization dealing specifically with coyotes, and it's helping both the city of Longdale and city of Hawthorne, especially in the Bajer Park area. It seems to be a growing concern. So yes, please let me know and we'll take care of that right away for you. Last thing I want is any resident to be attacked or bitten or have, you know, one of their children or loved ones, you know, taken away. I've heard of this happening. I don't want to see it. So please let me know. Mia, know you're, you know, I love the fact that you appreciate it. This is actually, the, the work you're giving me is something I've, you know, kind of lessens my stress. So actually I'm thanking you for the opportunity to kind of gather these resources and almost make a business environment. Yeah, and, and actually, that kind of gives me an idea. Now, working with the Chamber of Commerce, I think there is a better way to really utilize and connect not only the residents here in Hawthorne, but the business community too, and creating that conduit for communication. I think there is a, a gap there. And I think addressing that gap, maybe at my next town hall as well or office hours, I'll invite the president of the Chamber of Commerce here in Hawthorne online to kind of discuss how we can bridge that gap at the same time, the resources and job opportunities that are there now. And how we can actually promote that growth. Again, business is something I love to talk about. I would be, I would be a professor if I could. But I think that would be the best opportunity is getting the president of the Chamber of Commerce on my next town hall and really addressing this need for job placement, job resources and maybe having a job fair or another job fair here in Hawthorne, specifically dealing with individuals that have a strong resume or, you know, heavily academic background to really get back on their feet. I know, Brenda, thank you for saying that. I really think that, you know, getting the best individuals that are in charge of those certain departments to address these questions. I think it's phenomenal. And, you know, the president of the Chamber of Commerce is Patricia Donaldson, has been the president for the chamber for many years. And I think my, with my digital background connecting her office, my office and you, the residents of Hawthorne, oh, then we can really start fueling the city and start really seeing some growth and having some of these empty storefronts really kind of plugged back in and rebuilt with, you know, our residents here. So yeah, I love that idea. I'm excited. It's kind of lets me play with my, my background a little bit. So next office hours, be ready. I'll have the chamber and we'll talk about business resources, business fairs, job fairs, the whole nine yards. Let's see. Marie Austin, I'll, I'll I'll take a couple more questions before signing out. Again, I do have office hours this Thursday. I'll be sending out an email and a informational mail piece this week as well, touching on more programs. And more programs, initiatives, and there is a, if whoever wants to help on a community project. I was recently at the Del Air Baptist Church with Pastor John Jefferson, spending hours passing out food at his food bank. It's a phenomenal sight to see. I mean, the amount of families he's helping and the, just the, the amount of joy that you're seeing from these residents actually being able to feed their families for more than a week and the fact that he's doing this, just from the kindness of a heart, kindness of his heart. Twice a week, I'm going to start promoting his program. I have videos out there of the whole, of the, the whole Sunday afternoon. I'm going to be out there again for Tuesday. And, you know, for up-to-date information, as you can see on the screen, please visit my website, haterhawthorne.com. And before I finish, for those that wanted to touch on helping out the community, rebuilding a part of it, the same Del Air Baptist Church, which holds the food bank and feeds 700 to 800 families a week. It's phenomenal. We're working on now taking the other side of his, I want to say church parcel. He's had a community garden built on one side and now we, he wants a group of residents, including myself, to help and finish out the other side of the community garden. It's, it's amazing. He has corn, tomatoes, sunflowers, seeds. I mean, it just goes on and on. Watermelon too, by the way. So this coming Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, I'm going to be sending out information regarding this kind of community garden buildup at the Del Air Baptist Church. I'll be out there all three days, really trying to find a way to get this community garden wrapped around the church. And this way it's actually accessible to not only the families around the area, the students within the preschool and the school there at Del Baptist Church, but for every and all Hawthorne residents that are in need. So please, when you do see the email go out and you want to volunteer, let me know. Send me an email. We'll have shirts, we'll have the P P Es. I'll be providing lunch at the locations. I really want the residents to come out because it, the community garden will not, will not survive unless we all kind of come in together. And the two individuals that kind of organize this community garden alongside Pastor Jefferson, they'll be there as well and they'll kind of go over their program and how they want to see this layout happen in other cities. They have, this is their second site. They have a third site aimed for Los Angeles and they're working on a fourth one. If I can bring a, another site like this into another area of Hawthorne, please let me know. They are built to creating community gardens within cities, different areas, big or small. So please, if you're a Hawthorne resident, I want to really give back to the community, join me for this week and see where else we can kind of put these community gardens. But it's going to be a lot of work, you know, bring the family out, you know, and the kids. It's going to be a really fun family event. Now, before I sign out. Let's see. Is there any last? I mentioned those. You know, with that, if there's no other last questions regarding any other city issues, I'm going to start signing off now. I do have quite a few items to take care of and a lot of residents to address. Again, feel free to call. I know I've been a little delayed. I am going to be having my link up for individual office hours where, you know, you can start booking right on my Facebook, Instagram, even my website. It's, you'll have my live schedule on there and I'll have two different block schedules and they're going to be 15 to 30 minutes each. So I'm having maybe two. We're going to have four hours of individual office hours a day. I know it's kind of a lot, but I think it's the only way to really help, you know, the residents out there. So once you see the link, go in there, block off a time. It's an actual appointment scheduled. And you can pick between having a phone call, a Zoom call. Just make sure to jump on there, see it, book your appointment. I made it that easy. And I can't wait to hear from you guys. So again, you guys, I hope you guys are staying safe out there, taking advantage of any other programs we have. If there's anything I should set up, let me know. But with that, stay safe, wear your mask and be safe.